Good morning. This meeting of the Pender County Board of Education's Committee of the Whole is now called to order, and it is determined that we do have a quorum. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the agenda at this time. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Did you also want to add a closed session?
Yes, please.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Spivey. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The amended agenda is approved. At this time, we're going to move on to number three, financial planning. Three point one, attorney expenses. Ms. Allen.
Good morning, board. Our first item is the attorney fees. Nothing stands out. It's normal. Do you have any questions regarding the attorney fees?
No.
I looked at them. Everything seemed in order.
So, the next item.
Okay, three point two.
Okay, fuel and electric. So, again, just a reminder, Mr. Taylor and I are still working on the kilowatts per hour to make sure that we have those represented accurately. So, we have just updated on the electric, the cost only. So, if you guys have any questions, that's just going to take us a little time, probably a couple of months, to make sure that all those bills are in the system so that we can have something to compare to.
Okay, thank you. Board, any questions about fuel and electric expenses?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to three point three, PCS board report and PRC summary.
And so, we will start with the more detailed report with the report by PRC. And again, this is the same as the next report as far as totals go, but this is kind of a more detailed look at where our budget spent and is by program, which is what we call PRC, which you can see like classroom teachers. Do you want me to move there, Kevin? So, okay. So that you can see the actual individual programs and how they're spent by state, local, federal, capital outlay, child nutrition, and special revenue. And you will see that we're about sixty-seven percent expended as a total for the district, which is about where we should be. I do not see any, any issues with spending trends at this point. We will, now is the time when you'll see some things. We'll start maximizing state funds, you know, state and federal funds for the most part. Federal funds tend to carry over eighteen to twenty-four month grants, but state funds are use it or lose it for that year. And I'm proud to say that we don't send money back, so we'll be maximizing those state funds from this point on. Any questions about any particular PRC? And so, that really is, on the next report, is just the summary of the same thing, just at a higher level, by purpose, which means whether it's instructional or alternative programs, some of those things, still the same information, just at a higher level. So, the next item. Any other questions, I guess? I should say that before I get there. The next item are budget amendments. These are pretty standard budget amendments. State revenue, as we talked about this in our committee meetings, date, we have pots of money that are what I, I don't want to call it funny money, but it is based on what our expenditures are. So, like classroom teachers, oh one and oh seven for mostly media, nurses, and those people are based on positions and not dollars. So, what we do is maximize and put the highest paid people there. So, what we do is, we have to make our budget equal to whatever our actual salaries are, and, which is good for us, because the state will pay us no matter how much that is. So, eleven months, or twenty months, or ten months, whether it's fifty thousand or a hundred thousand, we get, we get that allotment. So, that's some of that maximization that we'll talk about. And that's where we're kind of updating these totals to match where we are for state. Special revenue is one of our next ones. And you'll see, like, we have that budget amendment for like an opioid settlement that we have for student support. And then you have some inter, inter PRC changes, just to get budget to actual. Capital outlay, that is where we are putting in the money for, the money that the county gave us for Chromebooks, for radios. So, that's where that money is being put in, and for, yeah, for those two things. Local, that is also where we have the bus increases, the salary increases for what the county gave us for the bus increases. Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Allen, fines and forfeitures, I noticed, had, were in red. So, what's going on with that?
So, what we do with fines and forfeitures, we estimate on how much that budget is going to be. So, then, once, we will stay in the red until we get to that point. So, we-
We just haven't collected them.
That's right. We haven't gotten to that point to the end of the year yet, so.
Lisa, before you move from that, Brandon, that used to always be something we had to talk about every time. There's something not straightforward about fines and forfeitures. Is that still the same?
What, what makes, like, your, your county's actually really good about fines and forfeitures.
They are.
Whereas, a lot of, the way it used to work was that your fines and forfeitures would have to be given out to the school district, and then the school district had to write a lot of checks back if, for whatever reason, the money was given back to the bondsman. But now, what's going on at the clerk's office, which is really great, is like, they will, instead of us getting money we hadn't technically received yet, or, or been given to us that's on appeal, they'll just hold it and cut checks to, to the bondsman. There are rare circumstances where we end up having to cut money back when something actually funny happens, but those instances are rare. Like, your fines and forfeitures are probably in a better place as far as the process goes than they have been in a long time. By the way, let me start with the concept of like, what is a bond forfeiture, or what is a vehicle forfeiture for folks who may or may not understand. So, a bond forfeiture, if a person who has been bonded out skips town, and there's a bond that's put up, the school district gets that money by state law, unless it has been set aside by a judge, and there's a specific statute they have to follow, and the bail bondsman has to follow to ensure that that money isn't set aside. For instance, if a bail bondsman has bonded somebody out, and that person ends up getting picked up by the feds in another state, well, they didn't have the opportunity to, to actually have that person appear in district court, so that's technically not a forfeiture, and you guys don't get the money. And so, if they provide evidence in district court that that didn't happen, that they qualify under these set of reasons, then you don't get the money. Vehicle forfeiture is very simple. Vehicle forfeiture is, you get a car, and then, if, for whatever reason, that person doesn't either come and provide documentation that, hey, I'm the title owner, I eat the bank or the lien holder, this is my car, or there's some other circumstances that justify them paying a fine to get it out, we sell it at auction, or it gets sold at auction, I don't care. We literally just get the money. We get the money for a vehicle forfeiture. And so, that's where that line item comes from. I realize that's kind of confusing, but I'm happy to, to talk more about it, but that's-
I noticed Richard used to talk about how convoluted it was, and all the stuff, different ways. It never was explained like that, though, so good.
Yeah, I mean, that's how it works. And the clerk's office here is really great. I can't say-
This is probably one of the best districts I've had to work with on that side, with those coming in. And I think you've actually had your office review them and make sure that we're getting everything we're supposed to be getting. So, I think, I think we're in a really good place with that.
Yeah, and they're, our team on bond forfeitures is second to none, I'll just be honest with you. Like, we appealed more, we won more, like, Ms. Allen feels good about that dollar bill, because it's based on passenger lines.
I just don't think it's ever been explained in a straightforward way like you just did.
I mean, it's pretty straightforward, I like to think, right?
We like to make things complicated on SME levels. We throw those numbers and names in different laws. Any questions on the budget amendments as they're presented? Okay, so, now we go to the fun stuff. So, we can talk about budget discussion for 2025, 2026. So, state planning budget increases, so these are just projections, and there are projections, which it means it's the best guess. We are planning on a three percent increase for staff, based on state, the state increase, probably a, about a one percent increase on retirement. We're paying at twenty-four point oh four percent now, going to twenty-five percent. We're paying eighty ninety-five per person for health insurance. We're now going to be looking at eighty-five ninety-five. I'm not sure if any of y'all have read any documentation about what the health plan is going through. So, they are now looking at doing plan cost basis based on salary. I don't know how they plan to implement that, because I'm thinking, what salary are they using? What happens if somebody gets an increase throughout the year? Are they going to go back and take more money to pay for your health plan if you get a raise, which teachers with national boards, quite frankly, or additional years, can go halfway through the year and get credit for, back from the beginning of the year, which would be a sizable increase? I'm not convinced that that will go through. Their lack of planning, the state health plan is in the deficit in a whole, and I think their, I think the ends to all of that is going to probably be retiree health insurance will be cut out, is what it's looking like, which we all know the struggle we have with getting people into state position, and we used to sell benefits. So, as they keep stripping these things away, I'm concerned. I know you guys are too. And the additional cost to the district, I mean, it just keeps continuing to go up and up and up. So, all, eighty-five percent of our budget is in staff. So, when you have these increases and these type of things, it really, I mean, that can mean a TA, or a bus driver, or another position we can't fund, because, you know, when state gives us dollars, they only fund their state positions. They don't fund our local positions, our federal positions increases. So, those are all concerns. Right now, you know, this is our best guess. And remember, when we give a three percent raise on all state paid employees, our supplement is a local supplement that is based on salary. So, you're going to have a local hit to your, to your supplement costs, because when the salary goes up and it's divided by our ten and five percent, then we're going to have a, a local increase. And this is the stuff that we've already talked to. This is something we presented to the county commissioners to the other day. We'll have another meeting with them after we discuss with you all. We have a budget work session where we can talk about what we think our needs are and where we're looking for 25 and The one other thing that we are definitely asking for support on, the district has historically asked for a one percent supplement increase each year, and that means a local increase, because again, the supplement is locally funded. So, the certified supplement increase of one percent, which would make it an eleven percent supplement for all certified staff, will cost an additional five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Supplement increase of one percent, which will make it a six percent supplement for classified, will cost about two hundred and seventy-two thousand, and basically a hun, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase, an ask from the local government for, for our supplement increase for 25, 26. Do any of you all have any questions? I do just, I keep saying this, because I think I want people to be as nervous as me about the federal government things that are happening. We are keeping a really close eye on those things. I think child nutrition may become impacted. I think federal programs, Title I, IDEA, which they say is not going to happen, but when you close down the Department of Education, and that's the, one of their primary goals and duties, it's still concerning. So, we will continue to operate very conservatively moving forward until we can kind of get a feel where we are with these federal programs. It will be devastating to us if they cut Title I or IDEA. It's millions of dollars in our budget and quite a few employees. So, just, just kind of keep you guys abreast of that.
Everything that we keep hearing on the news, everything that I, I'm reading everywhere, which you can't always believe what you hear, is that our budget will not, our budgets will not be cut. So, we can, I hope it's true also.
They're not going to cut Title I, that's all but you-
I would hope not, and I-
They're not going to do that.
I would hope that this would be all a bunch of posturing, that people are trying to scare everybody. At least, that's what I'm hoping that it is.
Well, the good thing is, we're in a better place financially to be able to sustain some of those short-term losses, right? So, we, we did a really good job with our ester funding, not just spending reoccurring costs. We don't have any employees that are still left paid from that funding source. The county was very gracious last year and helped us keep the remaining people that we had. I think us being conservative has given us a very good foothold, and we're a little bit protected. You know me, I'm the money person, so I'm always going to think on the worst-case scenario side, so that we can be prepared. But we, we will continue monitoring. We'll keep spending at the levels we're spending, but a little bit more cautiously. And we, we need some tightening down on some federal program spending as it is, so we're doing some reviewing of that. I'm not sure if any of y'all have seen that Lee County hit the news for having two hundred thousand dollars embezzled by an assistant finance officer. And I thought, her and, the finance officer and I are very good friends, and she said, the thing that caught it was the new federal programs director that was really on top of his budget and saw expenses that didn't make sense. Because, I mean, we have a hundred and forty-five million dollar budget. You think, okay, two hundred thousand of our hundred and forty-five million, how do you catch that? But that's where we're going. We're, we are at the point where we're trying to learn our budgets, get our budget directors that in tune with their budgets, that they'll know the same thing.
Well, all I can say is, I know, after all, that esters money was said and done, I think that you probably have given a lot, our county commissioners and the board as a whole, a lot of confidence in your capabilities in handling that much money, because we were not in the shape that a lot of counties were left in. And personally, I thank you for that.
Well, thank you very much. It's definitely a team effort. I like to say that I have the best finance staff in the state.
I believe you do.
Okay, I think that's all for me, unless you guys have any questions or concerns.
I think that's it. Thank you, Ms. Allen. Any questions? Okay. All right. Moving on to four point one, Pender Lee calendar.
I guess, ma'am, good morning, board, chair, and members of the board. Just wanted to draw your attention to, we still have an outstanding twenty-six, twenty-seven Pender Lee calendar to vote on. The Pender Lee team, along with Ms. Fallon Fuller, are working through the logistics of that since the other twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar has been adopted. So, the plan will be to have that ready for you in April. We're trying to align those as closely as we can to one another, so that, if possible, have the spring breaks line up and things of that nature. So, there's nothing to present today, other than to remind you that we have that outstanding task to take care of in April. Okay?
Just a reminder that early college, we wait until the Cape Care Community College has their calendar available to do our own.
So, nothing but a reminder at this point, but in April, we'll have that calendar ready for your, or samples of that ready for your review. The next item is policy thirty-two ten. This is considered first read. We covered this in policy committee. My staff recommendation would be to move this up for second read after Mr. McPherson goes through this with a fine-tooth comb to make sure we hadn't missed anything.
Okay, could you give us a little overview of exactly what you're changing with thirty-two ten?
Yes. Yeah, one big change is we put in place the definitions of instructional materials. So, instructional material is a whole, it's excluding any assessments and tests, and then there between a core instructional material and a supplemental instructional material. The other big component of this is it puts committees back in line with school level and district level committees that were removed previously. There is another section in there. I'm kind of hitting the highlights on this. I'm not really reading word for word, things in there.
That's fine.
But the, the other highlight is, for a core, core instructional material, when it's challenged, our first step is to offer an alternative material for that child and family, because the core instructional materials have already been vetted once before.
And there's just, they understand the process of, of, sorry. I'm not sure, because I'm not, I can't see that from here. I'm, just want to make sure that parents do understand. I mean, there is, there is a procedure that they will be made aware of, that they know how to follow.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. There's a, ways on our website to submit a review of instructional material, whether it be, especially for supplemental materials, like things like textbook, I mean, excuse me, library books, any other materials in, in the, in the classroom that would come up, including media, that's part of it as well. Textbooks are not typically bound anymore. They're typically online now. So, any other questions regarding this policy? Again, I think Mr. McPherson and I can sit down together and review this together, so we don't, make sure we don't miss anything in this policy before it goes to final read or second read.
Any questions, board?
No.
Okay, on to four point three, first read policy thirty-two hundred.
Yep, then thirty-two hundred is the, I guess you would say, parent policy of this one. So, in order for, for anything to be named as an instructional material, it has to go through this one. Not a whole lot of changes in this one. We did put in the word primary instructional materials. Any changes are made in red. And again, at the very top, primary instructional materials. And it goes through the process of how those primary materials are selected and utilized in our classrooms, including- including curriculum materials that the board adopts, things of that nature. So, not a whole lot of changes to this one. Just some basic stuff in there that we needed to take care of. Again, recommendation would be to send it to Brandon for review, and have it ready for a second read in April.
Or did we have any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Number five, strategic planning, 5.1, proposal of three-tier bail schedule. Mr. Michael Taylor.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. The first item is a proposal for consideration of a three-tier bail schedule for the 25, 26 school year. I have a short presentation. You have this at your place as well. I can't see, sorry. Oh, that's good. It can, it can be like that, right? Y'all can, y'all have it before you? I would start with just saying the goals are to develop a comprehensive, multi-tiered bail schedule that supports and promotes an atmosphere of academic excellence for all students. We want to protect our instructional time by ensuring safe and on-time transportation services. We believe the implementation of a three-tier bail schedule would improve campus safety by reducing the number of personally-owned vehicles on our multi-school campuses, specifically Surf City, Topsol School Campus, and Cape Fear Campus, address the significant bus driver monitor personnel shortage, and increase the capacity of full-time bus drivers to move them into career status. We believe a plan that we're developing will support the district's current pre-K2 drop-off procedures, which requires an adult or older sibling to be present. We believe it will reduce or eliminate, reduce is the key word for, for me, because some of our routes, that are double routes, are so short that it just doesn't financially make sense for a person to run one 20-minute route. So, if they run a 20-minute route and then come back and get another group of kids and run a 30-minute route, it doesn't make sense to cut those routes up. However, I, I will point out here, I have 25 in parentheses. Two years ago, when I came before the Board, we had 12 established doubles. Last year, when I came before the Board, we had 19 established doubles. This year, we have 25. One can only imagine what next year will be with our continued rate of change in that area, especially along the 17 corridor. That doesn't exclude the west side. We do have established doubles on the west side as well. The next item that I've noted is the supporting data that's been provided. In 2020, DOT started a research process there at the Topsol Campus, specifically Highway 17, St. John's, Vista Lane. That area was reviewed for quite some time, and their recommendation was, the only, the only recommendation they had that we didn't already have in place by redirecting traffic on campus, extending our queuing lanes, was to move to a three-tier bail schedule with at least a 45-minute split between the, the grade spans. The Edgelog bail time study that was produced, provided last time, and the comparison of our current data to propose, that will be updated. We have recently contacted Edgelog to do an update with our most current data. And finally, it's not added, but it is the transportation impact analysis for our new K8 school, which I will add to this presentation for the April Board meeting, which basically stated we would be required to move to a split bail schedule on that campus in order to obtain the driveway permit. And that was through MSTAs as well as NC DOT. Are there questions? Please feel free to ask any question as I'm going through the slides. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir. You just said that we've got established doubles on the west side?
Yes, ma'am.
Which schools?
Cape Fear in particular. There are several neighborhoods that are in the vicinity, so there are very short double routes as well.
I did not know that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't know we were doing that over on the west side. Okay.
I can provide the exact numbers by attendance zone at the April 11th Board meeting.
And are you guys going to be presenting us any potential scheduling times?
Yes, ma'am.
With that?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And, and some of that will be based on the current data metric, metric analysis that Edgelog is, is running for us. I just want, I don't want to bring back previous data without validating the last bail schedule recommendations that we had.
Edgelog?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you explain what that is?
It's a transportation data analytics, third-party vendor. They basically take all of our data, they run it through their analysis system to determine the most efficient utilization of our buses, as well as the best projected times for our, our bails. And how, how to best separate them. Again, maximizing drivers and buses is important, but we also have significant issues regarding safety on our campuses. For anybody who's been to Surf City, especially in the morning or afternoon during arrival or dismissal, it's, it's, it's an unsafe situation. And I think those of you who've been on the Topsol Campus would say the same thing. We have been able to improve the campus safety at Cape Fear by building the additional loop. When we established the Pender Innovative Learning Academy on that campus, we were able to move those different grade spans, but it's still, there are a lot of, there are a lot of cars coming on and off that campus at the same time. Yes, ma'am?
What make, I hear you saying you feel like it's an unsafe environment. Is it the number of cars that are there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Absolutely. There, you know, traffic is backed up at Surf City no less than a half a mile in any given time during morning or afternoon dismissal or take-in.
I, I would also like to add, I know at Pender High School, cars are backed up on Highway 53 during dismissal, which is very unsafe. If any of you know the number of log trucks that travel that highway.
Yes, ma'am.
It is very unsafe.
We may need to do a campus evaluation there, to make sure we're, we're doing our due diligence by utilizing the queuing that we do have on campus to get those vehicles off of 53.
Yeah, it's just very concerning to me because of the, the log trucks, which generally typically don't slow down too much.
Well, and I remember when they, when NC DOT came out and had that study for us in the Topsol area, they put a tethered drone up, I mean, pretty high up in the air, so they could get an aerial view of what was going on and how traffic was flowing. Possibly might be able to get them to do something for Pender High.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, utilization of that drone allowed us to redirect our own-campus queuing, which would be applicable in this situation as well.
Question, and I'm new to this.
Sir?
This might be a dumb question. So, if we're, we're going to stretch it out every 45 minutes, different levels. Wouldn't that put more stresses on the bu, I mean, more stress on the bus or more load on the bus schedule? If a parent has to be at work, they say they dropped the, I assume we're going with elementary first. So, drop them off, but then if the parents drop the middle school off, but they can't do it because they have to go to work, wouldn't, and now, now that child has to ride the bus?
Yes, sir. I think, I think you mentioned the parent dropping the middle school child off, right?
Elementary school first, and drop in the middle school, yes.
Well, we actually spent a great deal of time collaborating with third-party partners such as CIS. We also utilized internal stakeholder collaboration to develop PACES program, which could be before or after school. It just has to be outside the school day. And our goal for those shared campuses in particular was to minimize, to the greatest extent possible, that burden on our families, because we do know that there are parents, there are 300, when we last ran the data, there were almost 400 sibling pairs at the three campuses I mentioned. Predominantly Surf City and Topsol Campus, because they have larger populations. And we were able to implement, or I'm sorry, we were able to promote or provide the idea of an implementation of a before-school program for whichever grade span went first or last. That way, those shared siblings could still be dropped off at school, even though it would be significantly earlier, there would be adult care in an educational setting for them.
They would have to go back home and get them, or...
Right. We did not want our parents to be in those lines twice, yes, sir.
Got you.
And do we expect that some students may ride more? Absolutely. But even though we would potentially have more students riding, we currently can't put more than 60 students on our K8 buses. If those grade levels were separated, we could put 72 elementary students on our buses. So, that's 12 children additionally, by separating them, we could transport.
Do you know of any nearby school systems that use this three-tier?
Yes, sir, we have, I've identified nine utilizing the Sex and Chief DPI data. Johnston, Onslow, Union, New Hanover, Wake, Mack, Winston, Durham, and Cabarrus all have multi-tiered bail schedules. Some of them have definitive three-tier bail schedules, but like in Onslow, for example, who most recently went to a three-tier bail schedule because of the same issues that we're facing here, overcrowding schools, very rapid growth, especially with the relocation of 1,000 Marines from California to Stone Bay in particular, that caused a significant increase here just across the line for us. But they actually have their middle and high school at a 45-minute split, but their elementary schools are on three different times. And I, I don't know, I don't think that would be, that would not be beneficial for what we're trying to promote here in our district. New Hanover County actually has five different bales. Their pre-K go first, and then their elementary, and then their middle and high, and then, of course, they have their early college and alternative school on a separate bail schedule. But, you know, neighboring districts are much smaller than us. Bladen, Sampson, Duplin, and their schools, I mean, even though we have, our district is somewhat split, relatively rural and relatively suburban, many of the districts that are near us actually have complete rural with small pockets of town, with a small town, like Wallace, for example.
Have we ever done this before in the past?
No, sir, it's never been done.
Did this come about once we started construction on the new school? Is that where this came about?
Actually, this has been recommended since 2018. I did not put the TIA on there, but I think Mr. Hall was on the Board of Education when we built Surf City, and it was a recommendation at that time for the same reasoning, to eliminate the, or reduce the queuing and eliminate the congestion on Literacy Lane and the other, the other road there, I can't remember right off the top of my head. Do you remember, sir? The road that's, that you come off of 17 in order, Shepherd's? Yes, sir. So, it was a recommendation when Surf City was open, and that shortly thereafter, they ran the analysis at Topsol Campus, and it was a recommendation then as well. So, we've been, you know, the last year or so, we probably spent close to 200 man-hours utilizing surveys, stakeholder groups, parent town halls, a tremendous amount of analysis for our, you know, working with Edgelog, but also doing our internal analysis, making sure that our buses were separated enough that they could actually make the routes work, and that we weren't significantly impacting our parents. We already have, and our students, we already have some students, especially in the Topsol feeder pattern, who get on the bus very early because they live at the far northern end of the island, or the far southern end of the island. And then, Pender High, you have the students who live in the Curry, Black River area. And then, at Heidi Trask, you have the students who live in the Maple Hill area, who travel significant distances. Starting those schools earlier would, in my opinion, be more negatively impacting on those high school students who are already getting on the bus and riding for almost two hours.
And I would also say that the first month that school opens up, traffic out on 17, going past those schools, it is the definition of frustration, because everybody's trying to get back into the rhythm of schools starting back up, and, and everyone's trying to get to where they're going. And that first month, until everybody gets used to it, is, for lack of a better word, it's horrible. And we really, it's just my opinion, something needs to change. And if there's anything we can do to make it change, then I think we should. But again, that's just my opinion, because I, I do live over there and I do see it.
Well, this recommendation doesn't just focus on one aspect, in my opinion. I mean, we're looking at improving safety on our campuses, improving instructional time by promoting a consistent drop-off and pickup time for our students, reducing the impact on some of our instructional assistants. You know, we currently have 12 part-time driver-only's. Three of those people actually have jobs, so they're probably not going to seek the career status. But we have nine people who would be interested in expanding their service time and moving to career status. That's nine more full-time bus drivers that we could potentially put in a seat and reduce the impact on our instructional assistants. And if you had instructional assistants who were splitting a route, for example, driving in the morning, and another one driving in the afternoon, those, those teachers are now, or those instructional assistants are now able to remain in the classroom for longer periods of time and serving our students.
Yes, sir, and while we're talking about safety on our campuses, for any parents that are listening right now, I just want you to remember that there is staff out in our drop-off and pickup lines that are trying to help direct the traffic. I would ask that everybody, please, please be mindful of the, of all that staff that is out there. Keep your eye out for them. We don't want any accidents out there, and we certainly want to try to keep our staff safe, too. So, again, if any of you parents are listening today, please, like I said, go a little bit slower, be a little bit more mindful when you're on our campuses. We would appreciate it, and I'm sure that staff would also.
And some of the impacts, oh, I'm sorry, are there any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Has there been any consideration for high school going first?
Well, like I mentioned earlier, Pender High students who live in the Curry area, Topsol High students that live at the north end of the island, and Heidi Trask students that live at Maple Hill are already on the bus for almost two hours.
One-way?
So, if they're being, yes, ma'am.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, so if the high school student, for example, I can remember Trask specifically, okay? So, I'm going to use Trask as an example. Those kids get on the bus, they get dropped off around 8:10 or 8:15, so that they can experience breakfast and then go to class. Well, they're getting on the bus shortly after 6:00 in the morning. And if you moved high school to 7:00 o'clock in the morning, or 7:30 in the morning, now you're moving them back to the 5:00 o'clock timeframe of getting on the bus.
Well, the reason I ask that is that I'll, my concern is, when you mentioned instructional time.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I can say, I know for two-thirds of the traditional high schools we have in our county, student athletes miss a lot of that last period of, of the day. I know, I will say, with trying to help my student athlete plan that, we, we tried to make sure it wasn't math at the end of the day, okay? Or something that wasn't her strong suit. Just let me say that. Because I don't know if everybody here on the Board knows this, but the Athletic Conference that Pender High and Heidi Trask are in, they're in the same conference, although they are, one is a...
Different A's, A classifications.
Right, I don't know, we haven't moved over to the news.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, right, okay. Pender High and Trask have, they may be on the road one-way an hour and a half just to play a softball game. If the softball game starts at 4:00, that means they've got to be probably released at 1:30 to get dressed, get changed, get on that bus, drive, that's, and that's not even generous enough, probably.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they have to be there to warm up usually, you know, at least 45 minutes, an hour to get off the bus, get warmed up, whatever. I'm using, I'm using that, it could be cross-country, it could be whatever. But Topsol High School doesn't face that same... But Topsail High School doesn't face that same problem because they play mostly schools in Wilmington. I mean, they play Haggard. They do play, I know, South Brunswick, and that's kind of far.
Yes, ma'am.
But, but nothing like the consistency that our students on the west side of the county have to. And, and that is a concern, I'll say, of staff that I've talked with because they are missing a lot of instructional time.
Yeah. Please be advised, though, they, they're experiencing the same thing at Topsail High, especially when they're trying to seek out non-conference four-A schools. There aren't very many east of ninety-five. They, they travel quite a bit for their sports because they're trying to seek out those competitive, higher classification programs. But yeah, it, we could, and, and I will be glad to bring that to you as a group, as an option. We actually will work, Mr. Basden has a significant amount of experience already in the transportation industry and related to three-tier bell scheduling. So he will be definitely an asset to review some of the data that we're gathering and a proposal that we will bring to the board meeting. I do agree that, that we need to look at all options and determine which one is the least, most negatively impacting to our families. Because, you know, one of the impacts here is changes. There, there are going to be changes. And change is difficult. There's no doubt about that. The other thing we have to always take into account too is the size of the attendance zones when we move to something like this. It's a lot easier to do the middle school first because they're this big, then do the elementary so you can gain extra time, and then do the high school. And those are just simple realm demonstrations of how our attendance zones are. Obviously, having three high schools, you break this county up into thirds, it's a significant amount of landmass to cover. And not all roads get you there the shortest way, right?
Yeah, and I'll just say too, as far as early for Pender High, and, and I can't speak for Trask because they do have two gyms. Pender High is the only school that only has one gym.
Yes, ma'am.
And so only one team can practice at a time in the gym. So they're there till ten o'clock at night just practicing.
Right.
And because we only, they only have one option.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we could get there earlier, that could get them out earlier. If it's, if it's feasible.
Right. And the analytics will tell us that, okay? That, that's the most important thing to know, that it'll be, it'll be better for us to allow the Edgelog group to work through our data to tell us which one works best with our current assets. Because what we don't want to do is to look for more drivers and have to buy more buses. That doesn't, that doesn't help us in the transportation world or with the budget either because buses are very expensive. But some of the impacts from the recommended changes will be alignment with DOT recommendation for the Topsail High feeder pattern, which I've already mentioned. It will align with the new K eight, MSTA, and NC DOT requirement to obtain the driveway permit. It will reduce traffic impacts. I don't know why I didn't put all the schools, schools there impacted. But you know which ones our multi-campus, our monthly school campuses are. And I say reduce or eliminate, establish double routes, as I shared before, some of the double routes are, are in our best interest. Changes in the bell times, reduction in number of TAs driving buses by providing a window to hire more full-time drivers so that we can move them to career status. The idea would be that it would also reduce the number of buses that we need to transport our students. We currently have one full-size spare bus that we can use in the event we were to be able to hire more drivers. We only have one additional bus that we can currently put on the road. The other two spare buses are actually our short and handicap buses. Next steps, we will obtain the analysis of our current transportation data to validate our previously identified perspectives. We will collaborate with internal stakeholders to develop strategies to mitigate the challenges related to the bell times, especially for our elementary and middle school kids who are siblings. That, that, that is a very important aspect, and we don't negate how important that is to our families. Collaborative, collaborate with specialty schools, obviously Pila and Pender Early College are going to be important as well, making sure that we don't negatively impact the students who attend those schools. Cape Fear, with Cape Fear Community College, et cetera. And develop a proposal for consideration for the regularly scheduled board meeting in April. Are there any additional questions? I mentioned the nine schools that we were able to identify that currently have some type of a multi-tiered bell schedule. And I say multi-tiered because anything more than two is considered multi-tiered.
One last question.
Yes, ma'am.
Remember that we had paces put in place for before school for any students that would have to get there early if they were riding.
Yes, ma'am. We, we did have that planned.
Would our cafeterias be open by that time so they could go on in and get breakfast?
Typically, our cafeterias open up probably ten minutes, fifteen minutes earlier than students. At least when the, at least when the student first bus arrives. We would have to work with Eric Mark to do that, but usually they're accommodating to us in doing that.
Okay. Well, it would give them a little bit of time to go in, get breakfast. It wouldn't be as painful. It's just seeing their waiting.
Schools just make sure that they work on staffing and that in the morning with adults supervising the students when they get there. And that's nothing more than they already don't currently do.
Very good. Well, I have no more questions for, any questions? No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
All right. The next, I think I can control this, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir.
Five point two, proposal to purchase bus radios.
I didn't do that. It went away. The, did you say five point two, bus radios?
Yes, sir.
Yesterday, we did receive five proposals. The bid opening and evaluation is currently scheduled for Thursday. I sent an invitation just a few minutes ago to Mr. Basden, Mr. Overton, and Mr. Macon so that we can... I'm sorry? Is the opening? But the evaluation is? So today at one, thank you. I told him if I mess it up, just to step in here and correct me. So we'll open them today, but the bid evaluation and the review, and then we'll bring a proposal to you on Thursday. Well, we'll bring the proposal to you at the next scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting. But we'll do the evaluation and select our recommendation Thursday. And I, I put on there, obviously, we don't know how much it will be, but we have been allotted the additional $300,000 from our county commissioners specifically for the purchase of those, the radio equipment and the tower space. The next item is a proposed purchase of an activity bus. Sorry, I have a typo there, I see. We currently have seven activity buses that are more than twenty years old, and three of our activity buses have over two thousand, 200,000 miles on them. This purchase will allow us to increase our fleet to accommodate more student travel, at the same time reduce the use of the aging fleet in an effort to preserve the longevity of those vehicles. The state replacement for vehicles is twenty years and at least 150,000 miles. So we have several buses that are already, that if they were state-owned transportation equipment, it would actually be replaced. So we would like to bring that to you to the action agenda at the next regularly scheduled meeting. You'll see the quotes have been attached, and the current lowest bidder is White's International. Any questions about that? Okay. The next item for consideration is the K eight school naming. Staff has conducted two stakeholder surveys with several proposed names for our new school. The results of those surveys are fairly aligned. The most popular name selected for the new school by the community stakeholders is Hampstead Elementary and Hampstead Middle School. We would like to move this item to the action agenda at the next regularly scheduled meeting with a recommendation from Superintendent Cabinet. Any questions? Okay. The next item is the K eight pay application. It should be here this week. We will review it. And if there are no concerns, we will provide that for you at the next regularly scheduled meeting. And generally, these have been on the consent item, on the consent agenda. But if you would like those for the action item, please let me know, and I'll be glad to do that. The same with the K eight change order log. We have had some PCOs provided to us. We have reviewed several of them, and they look okay to us. But we have also sent a couple of them back because we're concerned about the process of those PCOs or the funding that's being requested for those. Once those PCOs are reviewed by our team, we will provide them to you for review and approval at the next regularly scheduled meeting. As requested, beginning this month, this, at the next regularly scheduled board meeting, Bordeaux Mosley team will provide a presentation regarding our current status. They will have pictures. Of course, you'll be there on Friday. I hope each of you will be able to make it. They have already begun digging footers at the fieldhouse area. We've proof-rolled the roads behind the area and the fields, and they're starting foundation footings on A, Section A, which is the heart of the building. You'll be able to see that on Friday. They have quads out there, which I'm sure they will offer to provide you a tour of the site. And I'm pretty excited about y'all being there to see it. It's, 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 it's looking really good. You can see where the school's really going to be now. All right, that concludes the strategic planning or operations section that I had today. Are there any questions about any of the items or the area of the next regularly scheduled board meeting agenda that I've recommended? All right. And the last item is a consideration for the youth risk behavior and tobacco survey. I have provided each of you a sample, the question sample document that was provided to us. I would just ask that you please review that. If there are questions that you would like to have amended or removed, please let me know so that I can communicate with them. Or if you would prefer us not conduct the survey at all, please feel free to let me know that as well. But we, we would ask that you allow Pender High School specifically, they were asked to conduct this survey. They will be awarded a $500 stipend for conducting the survey and providing the results to the state. These are anonymous surveys, but all the information is there. They have removed several questions due to the revocation of Title IX, gender identity, and several other things that were previously on this survey.
Very good, sir.
If there are no questions, thank you very much, and I hope you have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Okay, number six, student services. Six point one, proposal to allow Pender High School to conduct the youth risk, you know what? You sure did. That was part of student services. Yes, sir. Forgot. You're double hatting there. Okay. Number seven, instructional services.
There is nothing for that one.
There is nothing. Number eight, there we are, eight point one, board meeting calendar adoption.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you again, Board Chair and Board Members. Proposal in front of you would allow the board to enter into closed session before the regular meeting. There's an attachment to that as well that indicates... There it is. The schedule change, so what Mr. Finkbonner did essentially is take the original calendar that we had and change the dates moving forward. So starting in April, the next board meeting, we would actually have the regular board meeting starting at five, but open session would start at six at the regular time. This is an action item for you guys to decide on tonight. I think it was reviewed or talked about in each one of the committees to be able to do this, hence why we're sharing it with you now. So essentially, the closed session instead of after open session would be before open session. So we go closed, open, adjourn, ideally. There will be time at the end if we have to have another closed session and go back to it. Yeah, if we need that option. If you guys need that option.
Okay, Board, do we have any questions?
No questions.
No questions. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. As far as I'm seeing, that is about the end of our... I'm sorry?
Motion.
Yes, motion for close session.
Motion to approve. This is an action item.
This is an action.
Whenever we change our board.
For the Cal, is an action item? Okay, because that's a first.
Here's why. If you don't approve your revised meeting schedule, you can't...
Then we can't start it in April. Gotcha.
I know it's weird, it's an action item, but it's your action item for how you're going to meet, so.
Very good. Okay, Board, does anyone have a motion? We were entertaining motions for this.
Can we, can we put this off till the next meeting?
Yes, you can.
I'd like to think about this a little bit.
Here's the deal. You cannot start your next meeting at five o'clock.
I understand.
We would have to begin this in, in May, right? Or we could always call if...
You could call a special to start.
We could call a special, and, you know, if you guys need a little extra time to think about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I apologize, Ms. Burns.
No.
We talked about this before, but I didn't even think about it till just now again.
No problem. If you need extra time, we, we are always willing to accommodate that. That is not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, at this time then, can we have a motion for closed session?
Make a motion.
Oh, a second.
Okay, would anyone like to read the motion?
I will happily.
Thank you.
The motion, as I understand it, is the board will enter into closed session subject to the advice of its attorney pursuant to Northern Illinois General Statute 143-318-11A1 and A6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under Department of Defense C-319 to discuss matters concerning personnel matters. The board will also enter into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11A3 to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as required by Northern Illinois General Statute 143-318-11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. Point USC 123G and NC statute 115C-402. That is the motion as I understand it.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye. And motion is approved. We are now in closed session. Thank you.
Welcome back. We are coming out of closed session. Would anybody like to make the emotion make a motion to come out of closed session?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Reeves with the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And at this time, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Hall with the motion.
I second.
Mr. Reeves with the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. This meeting is now adjourned.